It's good to see you all. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:33. Slightly late, I apologize. Let's go, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Please do.
Pardon? Daryl is absent?
Yes.
TJ might be here momentarily, but it's a moment.
Okay. Yes?
Bruce, here. Robert Rizzo, yes. And Daryl?
Uh, Dan?
I'm sorry, Dan, sorry.
Dan is on the line, correct?
Yes.
Okay, there's Dan. Okay. Do the approval of the agenda. Dan? Would you like to make a motion to approve our agenda?
Motion to get agenda.
Do we have a second? Okay, Bruce, seconds? All those in favor of approving the June 15th, 2020 Planning Commission Agenda as submitted, say aye.
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 Opposed? None? Yes, we had to do a roll call?
He has a member of Housekeeping. When you have somebody participating remotely, every vote should be roll called.
And I do know that. Or I've learned it recently and forgot.
It's okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Linda.
So Pam, when I chair a meeting, because I've been chairing it number, I just need my secretary to call the roll.
Hey Linda, is it Bible, Farmer's All Act, and Roberts Rules? Or Bible, Roberts Rules, and Farmer's All Act?
I'm not sure what your bylaws say. If they say Roberts Rules, then it's Roberts Rules. But Roberts Rules borders a parliamentary procedure.
I was complimenting your knowledge of probably all three.
Okay.
Here.
No, that's a yes or no.
Yes.
We're rusty.
Yes, I am, Bob Con.
Yes, you are.
So far.
Okay, can I skip the people who are not here, please, on the roll call?
Yes.
Pam Lowell?
Yes.
Bruce Tree, yes. Robert Rizzo?
Yes.
And Dan McGarry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Number five. Oh, wait, yeah, we already did that, okay. Number five, public comment? Ms. Bonnie?
I would like to know about the industrial zone. In our, on the Chubb Road Park. On the, in that stock over there, there are businesses and there's residential kind of mixed in. I would like to know if there's any way that you could do, if this person, if a residential person sells, can they sell commercial and you have their property become commercial? And you weed them out, one after another, when they decide to leave? And it also would, might give them a little incentive, because commercial properties sell for a little more? And it seems to me it would get this mingling mix of this guy over here wants it totally quiet because he's got a house, and this guy over here's got a truck, and they don't really match. I think it would solve a whole bunch of problems as time progressed.
Do we have that issue? I thought the people that have come here, the ones that I've, or do they say? It's what? Oh, okay, sorry. I'm really rusty. We've gone very casual. You should see us with mass online, it's all goodness, okay. Is that something we want to, we want to answer after?
Sure, we can, if you want to talk about it, we can talk about that.
All right, well. Any other public comment? No, you're good, okay.
Can you make sure that everybody has their bike turned on?
Yes. I think I'm the only one talking so far.
Excuse me, please, while I go to my mailbox. I'm spoiled by the usual services that I've got.
Oh, yeah, see, we're all slacking these days in this COVID-19. Well, maybe not all of us. I am. Okay. Chairperson comment? None. Did you, do we have a, do we have a quick comment to?
Sure, and I can speak to that. We have a future land use plan that designates what we expect the parcels to be in the future in our master plan. And so if, if a particular property is maybe zoned agriculture right now, it may have a future land use plan for industrial. In fact, there is, um, the area, you know, on either side of Chubb Road, south of Six Mile is all planned for industrial. North of Six Mile is planned for industrial on the west side of the road. So if there are different properties that are not there, then that may be something to think about for an update in the master plan, if that's something we're interested in.
I think she was asking, were you asking like how the process works, Bonnie? Do we just automatically do it? Or do we, do we tell the landowner what he has to do with his property?
I was asking, is there a way to do this? Because it would encourage people who are going, "Oh, I'm so sick of living behind a factory," to actually take his property and give it to the commercial zone. You would get technically property for this commercial sale for more money. You would give him an incentive. There's little lots and there's big lots and whatever there is down there.
I think he should come to the Planning Commission, or not Planning Commission, but to the township hall, and he can talk to Paul how that works.
There is no he, I was just asking this question.
Oh, I thought you might be trying to get rid of somebody.
Anybody.
All of us.
So the answer is potentially yes.
That's it? If you want to, otherwise, let's just move on. Okay, that's in there, we can discuss it more at the end. Okay, new businesses, Calo Truck Terminal Building Addition Site Plan Amendment 20-002. Paul, did you want to give that brief overview?
Yes, I'm happy to. So this is the same site plan that you all saw and approved not too many months ago in 2019. They did want to do an addition, or two additions, to the existing building out there. Relatively small. There's a 2,200 square foot addition on the west side, which is going to be used for additional shop space. Basically, you can see in your packets, there's elevations and floor plans provided. It looks like a continuation of the existing building. And then in the northeast corner, they're putting on 15, almost 2,000 square feet for restroom facilities, a small manager's office, and some additional storage and mess. Because the total square footage was over the threshold of 2,000 square feet, it did require them to go through a site plan amendment. So that's why this is here before you. By and large, nothing else on the site has changed. They've shown that the parking requirements are still the same as what it was before the minor additions were proposed. None of the other site details have changed. So they're still working forward, and they have started this process of moving the pond over that we talked about last year. So that is the whole rolling. They did provide, in addition, the engineers' report. And they did note some concerns about the pond design, but that's really more about the design from the existing design. And they're going to have to do it as-built and work all those things out in the field anyway. So that's nothing really that, that I think should hold up.
The water level?
There's the water level, yeah. So, so they will, they will deal with that. If, I think the worst-case scenario is that they would have to expand that pond slightly. But they would do that to the east, and it would just cut into that storage area that's shown on the site. So that's, that's something that our engineers feel confident that they would work out in the field. As far as the, the building additions go, it's really minor, doesn't, doesn't affect anything, as far as I can tell, on the site that you guys approved last year.
Do you do any new lighting on the outside of the building? Since our, whatever lighting is there, we're going to replace. Same.
It's a continuation of what's existing. So whatever's on the existing building is just going to be brought out onto the new additions.
Take it down, put up the same?
Uh, well, we're going to put new with, you know, with all the new technology.
Get away from LED.
Paper, all that kind of thing.
Banter to LED.
Yes.
So all, all those lights, any new lights that you put on the building are going to have to be fully shielded and down-directed? Yes. So we would ideally want to see that detail on the site plan?
On the site, because that's all on the building, it's all on the...
Lighting still needs to be on the site plan. And there were a couple other minor, minor things that we wanted to see updated on the site plan. But our suggestion would be to, if you felt comfortable with it, to go ahead and approve that tonight and have them submit the plan with those minor updates that we indicated in our report for us to look at administratively. So if you approve it, we would suggest that you approve it with the condition that they submit a plan that addresses those couple of, couple of minor items I have at the end of my report. In addition, we want to see the lighting.
Any change to which the way water runoff is handled? You know, gutters, downspouts, just relocation of sand?
Just relocation of everything that's existing.
An existing underground line or something?
Actually, they, they're, you know, they're through the, their scuppers down through, over and then down, and then out to bottom of the building.
It's flat roof?
Yeah.
Quote-unquote, flat roof?
It's got some pitch to it, but yeah, they're flat roof.
Okay.
And then, like I said, it doesn't increase. All we're doing is we're taking one office and we're just moving it, we're giving it more shop space. The one, the one addition is strictly a truck bay with a pit, so that they can work on the trucks from underneath without being on creepers all the time, that they can actually get on it. So, and then the other, what the other one is, is just like you said, is more storage. We had to expand the bathrooms, so we're making the bathrooms more. There's going to be, there's more stalls, more use. Right now, there's one, one bathroom for that whole shop, one toilet.
One of these additions is, has a pit for?
Just for the people to walk in and work on the trucks.
Oh, I know what those are. There's like ventilation systems and drainage mitigation systems to separate.
We're not draining it out, it's all collected in the pit. There is no drainage out anywhere, there's none of that going on. It's collected right there. Anything that does get in the pit, it's all pumped back into a barrel. It's not drained out somewhere, none of that.
Really?
Yeah.
So what's the pit itself made of?
Concrete.
So it's, it's a sealed pit?
Yeah. It's 10 inches of concrete walls, everything, it's just a pit. All it is, is for someone to climb down a ladder and work on a truck.
I used to be there, Mike, I used to be in them.
Yeah, because, you know, they don't want to crawl in. Because they're getting, you know, the creepers are getting harder and harder to work on, fix the, all the axle stuff. Everything they got to do, it's just easier with the pit, so.
No, I understand. You'll, you'll have to clean the pit once in a while, you'll be getting oil and some.
Yeah, and then, and there, there is a, you know, the pit has a pitch to it, so it's got a collect basin at the bottom, and then it's on a grate. So then they just have to pop the grate, pump it into a... Because again, you, you know, we're not going through the process of trying to put that somewhere and clean it and all that, you know, and then have an environmental issue. So it'll go into a barrel, because they burn all their waste oil and everything there.
For heat?
For heat, so.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Was there anything in this plan show, plan showing how that was collected?
It's all in the building, on the, for the building permit. It's all in the, it's not on the site, but it's all in the, the building permit, you know, the building's head.
Okay.
The building, building permit will be reviewed by the building official to ensure that they meet all of our two hundred.
Because usually, there's like, well, diesel doesn't do it, but certainly gas does. And there's usually like, you know, active air movement, and certainly a way to collect, collect any spill, you know, axle, grease, engine oil, et cetera, et cetera. Sounds like that's been covered. As long as that's going on.
Well, they have a, yeah, it'll be like a pit, there's a metal rail with, you know, with a track on it, or like an oil collection device.
Sliding tray on a shuttle?
Yeah. And then, like I said, the pit's on a grate, so anything that gets out of the floor, like you said, it has to clean it, we have to clean it every, you know, once a week, I'm sure.
You've got jacks on it too, so you can lift up an axle from the slide?
Uh, we, no, it's, we're not getting that far. It's more for, it's just more for breaks and oil changes.
Tell them to spend some money, let's go, that's what they need.
So, okay. I mean, ideally, the only work that they would be doing there is minor repairs on their own equipment. And once you start getting bigger than that, then we'd start having a use issue.
So you're just, you're going to have a trough?
So it's better that they don't?
Yeah, it's.
You're going to have a trough under the greeting, you're going to have to clean the trough.
Yeah, it's a pump system into a barrel. And then, like I said, it's oil changes, it's shocks, it's, you know, you know, because again, it's, it's just easier standing up than laying it down.
Oh, grease points.
Yeah, it's a lot of grease points, a lot of grease points. And so it's all minor maintenance stuff, it's nothing, we're not tearing, they're not tearing trucks across, but those trucks are getting, you know, hundreds of thousands of miles a year. And it's a lot, it's a lot of maintenance. I mean, there's always trucks in the shop.
Just safety, environmental, necessarily work.
You're okay, cool.
Yep.
Dan, did you have any questions?
No, none at all, good to be.
Okay. So should we?
So if you do feel compelled to move forward with an approval, I would recommend that you condition it on dealing with those three outstanding items from my report, that they can submit for administrative review.
Is it, is it four? Because I have three in your report, and then?
In addition, lighting, yeah.
And then the lighting, okay. We shouldn't have had options.
Oh, yeah.
This, 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 this.
It's like we're all doing this for the first time.
I know, it's like the first day of school all over again. Okay.
I'm not going to stab. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request based on the review that was submitted by Paul, with the three exceptions plus the additional corrections request with the addition of the lighting, for port lighting.
So when you say the request, you mean the?
Subject.
Calo, uh, yeah, I'm sorry. Calo Trucking Site Plan Addition. Do we have a number two?
Two zero, two zero dash zero zero two.
There you go. Solve it, add it, dissolve it? Got it.
Okay, do we have a second? Dan, would you like this second or something?
Second.
Dan's second, okay. Okay. All those in favor of approving the? Oh, what's that?
He's going to do a voice roll call.
Oh. Sorry.
Great. Hearing no further discussion, vote. Bart Con.
Yes.
And Pam Lowell?
Yes.
Bruce Tree, yes? Robert Rizzo?
Yes.
And Dan McGarry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to pass this. So it's conditional on those three items in Paul's report, plus the lighting. So you've got four things that need to be picked up.
Now, you'll email me that?
Yeah, I can, I can send you the requirement. Really just submitting a couple sets of plans for us for bylaws.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Thank you. That's it?
That's it. You're almost on normal.
You want to get back on that bike?
Be safe. Talk to you soon. All right. Old business items. Special district regulations for the USD section. We have discussion on that. We have special district regulations for the hamlet section. Discussion on that. And zoning ordinance cleanup items, we'll have a discussion, so. Paul, would you like to?
Yes.
Start us off?
Put a little bit of old business here. We've seen this a number of times. The majority of the changes that you see here are really centered around the USD, based on direction that we provided the last time we discussed this, which I don't know how many months ago it has been now. But we had done quite a bit of updates to bring this in line with the direction from the master plan. And then you all provided some more commentary and direction. We brought it back again, more commentary and direction. And so this, I think, is in pretty good shape. Obviously, we welcome any questions or comments or changes that you'd like to see. But by and large, this update addresses those sections from, or part 10 of the master plan that talks about the USD. If you recall, we separated the USD from the hamlet in the master plan, so there was just some like housekeeping that we needed to do, where we changed the references in the zoning ordinance. But with the USD itself, there was quite a bit more work to do because of all the work we did in the master plan with the direction for especially kind of the village commercial area. We updated some districts, if you recall. Previously, we had the Research and Research Applications District, and we had the Residential Office Park District. Ultimately, in the master plan, we. Ultimately, in the master plan, we decided to combine those into what we're calling a Business Park District, which takes the uses that would have been permitted in the Research and Research Application, Applications District, as well as those office park, or the residential office park, which some of the type of use that was conceived in that will actually be accommodated in the village mixed-use area. So those were kind of more of the, the small-scale offices that you might go to for an appointment, that kind of thing. Whereas the Business Park is going to be more of a larger, either doctor's facility or research facility, testing laboratories, et cetera. More of those kind of high-end Business Park research types of uses. So what you see here today is, I've been through and kind of looked at all the different places throughout the ordinance where these things show up and make reference to different maps that no longer exist in the master plan. Because like map 19 and map 17, which were referenced throughout, are really just the future land use map. Consolidated the, those two districts that we just talked about that allowed for offices. So we had to update both the land use table, as well as the dimensional requirements, table 20 and table 30, dimensional standards, to recognize those consolidations. The hamlet, not much has changed. Well, nothing has really changed since the last time you saw that. It's still got the same draft date, 9/13/19. Because I don't believe that we had any real additional comments or direction there. You can see there's some sections about the types of housing. It was based on the master plan. And then the materials for non-residential buildings, so that we can really work on this, you know, kind of commercial corridor here in the middle of the hamlet. And then, like I said, the bulk of the, the bulk of the work here has been focused on the Urban Services District. And so ultimately, the way this is set up now is it allows for a number of underlying districts within the USD to be considered USD districts. But they would have to meet the same standards. So like the single-family residential would have to meet our single-family residential standards. The multifamily, the Business Park, et cetera. And then there is an opportunity for people through the PUD tool to ask for variances, if you will, but they all have to enhance that project and make it consistent with what the direction in the master plan is for this area.
Could you clarify that, Paul, a little bit? What you just said, existing homes that are residential that are in the USD?
No, underlying zoning. So the underlying zoning, if you look at the future land use plan for the Urban Services District, you can see each of these areas has a, thanks. Has a projected zoning. And so some of these districts, while they're in the USD, are also, you know, zoning districts that are located outside of the USD. So if I was going to develop, like Salem Springs, for example, at the medium single-family density, it would have to meet all of those standards from the zoning ordinance for a single-family development that would happen anyplace else in the township.
Okay.
But they do have the opportunity to ask for deviations, if you will, but those deviations all have to be demonstrated to enhance the project. And you all would have the ability to make a recommendation to the board.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks for asking for the clarification. I did, I ripped through this stuff pretty fast, and I'm happy to explain any, any more nuances if you'd like. So that is kind of by and large it. Obviously, we can have some discussion about this, but I just kind of want to let you know what the next steps are. We would be placing all this into ordinance adoption format. So it would be a clean copy, essentially, and it would look exactly the way it will in the ordinance, and it will say, this section will replace this section in its entirety, for example. Where this section is being completely removed, like the RRA district is going to get completely removed. So that will all be in a clean format. We would have, we do have to hold a public hearing, make a recommendation to the township board. So once we have that public hearing, there's still an opportunity, if you see changes that you want to make, to say, after that public hearing, say, "Okay, well, we're going to recommend this to the board, but we want to see A, B, and C changed," if you will. You have the opportunity right now to provide feedback if there are things that you want to see changed or additions that you want in, in this language.
Public makes things, brings things to our attention.
I'm sorry?
I said like, when the public, you know, can bring things up, it, it.
It may, yeah.
For its first changes and whatnot, sure. Okay.
Open for discussion?
Correct.
Okay. Flapping back.
Supposed to know what page you're on.
Well, I guess, the main question here is like, when do we, do we want to? Are we going to go through each of these land usage ones? The level of usage for a specific, for the areas that it's permitted, conditional, et cetera, with the public, with their suggestion? Do we want to take a hack at it on our own? How, how are we going to go about that?
I'm not sure I understand the question. So what we have is a draft of what we're proposing. This is not to say that, and this is really all just focused on the USD, the hamlet, and, and updating the Research and Research Applications, and I can't remember the other one, Residential Office Park, to consolidate those to Business Park. So those are really the only changes you see here. And that's all we've been focused on, because we had an initiative to get these sections of the ordinance up. To get these sections, the ordinance updated. If you're talking about doing additional changes or an additional review of the land use table, I think that would be a, a next step. I don't know that we want to.
Would we go through an approval and a print, uh, you know, right back into the zoning ordinance first, or would we do that before?
I mean, it's, it's a process that we've been working on for, for so long, I think the intention, as I understand it, is to get this section done and adopted. And if there are other things that we want to continue to work on, we can continue to work on that. Does that make sense? Am I answering the right question?
Um, I think you are, but let me just pick out, here on page one, uh, uses, rural uses, farm market is conditional.
Yes. In what district?
In agricultural, residential.
Okay, so I guess, so I guess my understanding, and you all can correct me if you want, or, you know, if, if I'm speaking about the wrong procedure, but so we, we went through and we said, here are our planning priorities for the year, we've done this a couple of times, and this USD hamlet, these couple other little cleanup items were something that we wanted to knock off right away.
Right.
So if we get into going through and use by use, going through this entire table to figure out if we want to make any changes, like in the ag district or any other district, it will probably prolong this process.
Okay, and we just want, we're, okay, so our goal is to get these other ones cleaned up, with the understanding that we may want to come back, or we probably will want to come back and clean these up, but let's get the portion that we're concerned with at least released in black and white.
Yes.
Out there for the public, and then we come back to these.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that, Pam, is that?
Yes.
Okay, so, so, so when my kids go out there and put a couple wood boxes out on the lawn right now, I'm gonna tell them, no, you have to go to the township to get some sort of conditional use permit to sell some tomatoes out of the garden. Just, just, just throwing that out there, that's.
Or you could do whatever other people do and go out there and let them do it, and if somebody complains, then you have to deal with it.
But see, I sit up here, I sit up here, and I'm under that microscope.
Yeah, well.
No, I know.
If, if you wanna, if you want to talk about what they can and can't do in, in those regards, cause if you're, if you're doing a little farm operation, can't, I mean, there are provisions for certain things, but that's not necessarily the discussion.
We kind of addressed a lot of that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about carpentry businesses and plumbing businesses, and we, we talked about a couple of things like that, which we know is happening. We want to allow the people, the township, to continue being able to do that and have the freedoms to be able to do that, and run a small business and things like that. But it'll also create a little concern if we release it like this, those same people are going, hey, what's going on? I thought the discussion was that we were gonna go through this. As long as it's understood by both us and the public.
Yeah.
That the plan is to absolutely come back to these specifically in these areas, to go through them and rehash, and we'd love their input, that's, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think that, um, initially, we were going, we were dealing with one section, then dealing with another section with the idea that we're gonna do it all at once. And it's become quite evident that we're never gonna get through the whole thing in that fashion.
Elephant, okay, so could we just release the sections that we changed?
Yes, so once we change these, the ordinance will be updated for those sections, and then we can continue, I mean, the, the.
Come back to the other sections.
We can continue working on forever if we want to.
We went through and reviewed a lot of this because it was in transition from Rodney to Paul, and I had a lot of questions, and I wanted him to, I know we had done it, but I wanted it.
We wanted to hit.
Again, to review again, and then with the changes in the master plan that he made, there, that's what initiated a lot of things, so it's a, it's just like a, like a bulk cleanup, and then it's just like what we always do, if there's something comes up we need to address, then we can and will. Where there's just so much out there now that needs to be cleaned up, we want to get it cleaned up.
Get, get what we've done released in print, and let's come back and get the rest of it in another sweep.
Exactly.
Correct.
As long, as long as that's understood, that's fine.
My interpretation is, cause some of the stuff could be developer-based, is to address the language and the written part of that, uh, not to go back and look at what's already existing and, you know, grandfathered in and all that stuff and trying to debate all of it. So that we're protected from future developers coming in and going against the old language and not having the new language with the new master plan. So that's the cleanup we're trying to do, just add the language to the master, the master plan. For right now.
What's GC?
General Commercial.
So that said, is there questions or discussion about this particular language?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, uh, that, same subject. Um, just, again, just for my, you know, puts, uh, difference between accessory, defining accessory use and conditional use and the process, just a real light with definition on that.
Okay, so a, um, obviously, there are permitted uses that are permitted by right. An accessory use would be if you have an established principal use, then you can have accessory uses that are normally compatible with that, right? So, single-family residential, you want to have a shed, the shed is considered accessory use. You couldn't build a shed without the single-family house because that's an accessory without a principal. Conditional is a use that's probably okay in a district, but may have additional requirements that are already placed on it by the ordinance, or gives you, as the planning commission, the ability to place additional conditions on that use to ensure that it's compatible with the surrounding area. So if you all don't have any particular comments about the language that you've received in your packets this time, but you want to continue to take some time and read through it, I'm welcome, I would welcome an email or, or some written correspondence with questions or direction, um, that, that if it merits a change, then we can bring that up at the next, next meeting of the public hearing.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, and again, you, you've all seen this many times, the reason Pam and I decided to throw it back on the planning commission agenda tonight was, cause if we're really gonna go forward with a public hearing finally to, to do this thing, I wanted to make sure it was fresh in everybody's, everybody's eyes.
We can get it done.
When we review in a public hearing, will it be only the areas that we changed, or will it be the ones that we, that I'm saying, I guess that I'm saying I'd like to go back and eventually discuss?
At the public hearing, we will put a notice in the paper that says, we have proposed language to amend this section, this section, this section, and this section, and if you want to look at those proposed language changes, they're available here at the township, or I guess maybe we bring them on the township web if we're, township website, if we're still in a socially-distanced atmosphere.
Maybe we put an asterisk in there and say, these areas will be discussed in the future.
That, that wouldn't be part of our, our public hearing notice.
I don't think so.
I mean, I, I think that by all means, if you're talking to folks and they're saying, hey, I thought we were gonna look at this, you could provide them that explanation.
Okay, and say, we literally haven't gone through those, those are the next in our, our list of to-do, we're getting these portions done.
Right. The Zoning Enabling Act requires us to put that very specific language in the paper that says we are proposing changes to these sections. And, and it would be confusing, I think, if we speculated about what other changes we might be making.
I understand.
Okay. More discussion? Dan, are you okay? Did you have anything to add?
The way I see this, it's all for discussion right now, the public hearing later on will clear up everything. That's the time to move major changes and everything, but I think for discussion, this is, is polite.
Yeah, we've already had discussion on a lot of this, if we want to change something after the fact later, start rehashing it, then that would be later.
Sure.
There's been a lot, a lot was going on and, and, you know, development-wise, and we wanted to, we already started cleaning this up a long time ago, we just needed to finish it. Not that it's ever, our work is never done.
It starts, you can spend a lot of time on this and then do it all over again in the public hearing. I mean.
Yeah.
If there's something here that stands out or whatever, then alert Paul, shoot it past.
Correct.
And then we can deal with it in the public hearing.
Yes.
Yes, like I said, by all means, if you have changes or questions, let me know in the, uh, time between now and the public hearing, so we can get that cleaned up. But 15 days before the public hearing is when we have to have those publications in the newspaper, so that's when we will have the, the language basically set. Obviously, like I said, if there's something that comes out of that public hearing that gives you a reason to want me to amend it, you can make that request before we send it to the board.
Okay.
Okay.
So. We're gonna get comment.
I imagine so.
Yeah.
Well, that's what it's for.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, um, moving on to number nine. Reports of commissioners and correspondents, no TJ, so, no ordinance, no DAREL, no ZDA, land preservation and conservation.
Uh, we haven't had too many meetings either, so, uh, no real updates there, other than the fact that we're still looking at a few properties, and I imagine as ongoing, it's a long time considering the project, and we have made, oh, headway because building permit closed, I'm getting the driveway in at the shed property, so we're kind of in holding pattern, hopefully we'll have a meeting tomorrow.
Huh? Any other review?
Got nothing.
No news? Kind of, kind of busy building, no buildings have been, I mean, nothing's been going on since, has everything like stopped?
Well, so like I said before, um, Calo.
Working on what they started.
Calo started working on their project because they obviously had their approval from, from last year.
Right.
But as far as, uh, any other big projects coming our way, we haven't heard anything. Um, there have been, I don't think there's been any shortage of work for Ann and I in terms of, uh, home building applications, barns, sheds, you know, all those, all those little things.
There's a lot of that?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like maybe even more than I'm used to, but it's springtime, so a lot of people, well, and people are bored too, people have been sitting at home, so they're thinking about the projects they want to do.
Okay. Okay, it'd be interesting, you know, maybe in our, our next meeting, like, how, how many of that, I mean, like, what's going on, are we all six by six?
Yeah, we could, I can, I can put together.
Just a number, you know, get this, this, that.
Yeah, like the, like the reports I used to do with the numbers and building permits, we can, we can pull that together.
Something simple.
Sure.
Okay, um, approval of the minutes for February 24th, 2020.
February 24th, 2020.
Dan is on it. Okay, roll call.
I'll second that.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you. Takes the village to get Pam through a meeting. Okay.
And what, uh.
Bert?
Yes.
And, and Hello?
Yes.
Ruth Reed, yes. Robert Rizzo?
Yes.
And Dan McGarry?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would like to, uh, take this moment to thank both Pam and Ann for giving me to this meeting. Thank you.
Paul. Hopefully, we'll see you next month.
Right, I'm hoping for that too.
Very good, very good. Um, public comment. Linda?
When Bert was talking about your public hearing, talking about things you might address next, you could simply have a one-page handout that says, we intend to look at these sections and give it to people. If you want public input, to let people know what's coming up is actually a good thing. Not specifics to Paul's counter, but just the general areas you might look at.
Yes, I'll provide some guidance. Thank you. Chairperson comment? None. I've spoken enough today. Okay, my goodness, I thought we were gonna have a full meeting, we are adjourned at 8:16. Thank you all. Good night, Dan.
Good night, Dan.
Good night, Dan.
Good night. Dan, we're here.